Good evening. Welcome to the somewhat late Village Board meeting. Today is Monday, November 8th. We've just completed the joint meeting that we have annually with the Pleasantville School Board. And because of the late hour, we're gonna jump through stuff fairly quickly. I have a bunch of announcements, most of which I will hold off on, but two things need to be said now. And the first is that this coming Thursday, November 11th is Veterans Day, and we have a Veterans Day ceremony in Memorial Plaza at the gazebo at 11:00 a.m. On the 11th day of the 11th month, and we encourage folks to come and be a part of that brief ceremony. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, which is our only opportunity, is that Westchester County is hosting a Household Recycling Day event at Playland Park, which is on Saturday, the 13th, from 9:00 to 3:00. And they will take all kinds of stuff, including properly labeled chemicals, tires, scrap metal, electronics, appliances, the kinds of wastes that are hard to get rid of. And if you are interested in driving to Playland to find out more, you can take a look at westchestergovernment.com, and there's more information there. Anybody?
Yeah, this last weekend on Halloween, we had the Second Annual Candy Crawl. I wanted to thank Shane McGaffey, Michael Peppard, Paul Alvarez, Nicole Wasick, and a couple of Sarah Huckinon and Nora Fielan, all for driving that and specifically also the Pleasantville Unified, sorry, the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department and the Volunteer Ambulance Corps for leading us. Also, thank Courtney Davis Walker for helping publicize the roots. Thanks to the village for donating 8,000 pieces of candy, about, I think, 7,800 of which we gave away, and a couple hundred ended up in some of our high-traffic zones around Great Oak this weekend. So that was really a great experience for us, for the kids, and thanks so much for... This is an all-volunteer effort. It didn't consume village funds or anything like that, so we very much appreciate it. And thank you, Eric, for helping coordinate it for the village.
And thank you, Alyssa, for her craftsmanship on the donation box.
Yes, a donation box and carrying hundreds of pounds of candy up and down the stairs.
Thank you, David, for hatching that scheme last year and for turning into an annual tradition. And we had a great ragamuffin parade, which we were unable to have last year, and always feels like one of the great days in Pleasantville when we're taken over by ghouls and goblins and Harry Potter. A really amazing scene, so. All right, do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Introductory law, law seven concerning parking in Memorial Plaza. Is there a second? You second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Welcome to the public hearing on our proposed tweaks to the way parking works in Memorial Plaza. Eric, can you just give a quick summary of what's intended?
Sure. So this local law would amend the village code to allow for non-permit holders to park in Memorial Plaza Monday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. In addition, on Saturdays, the lot would be a paid lot from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Memorial Plaza permit holders would be permitted to park, as they are right now, without paying a meter during all hours.
So the short version of a longer story is that in our pandemic-evolving world, that parking lot has been massively underutilized, and we've been in the odd position of requiring a permit to park in a lot that is essentially empty and charging folks to have a permit, which, among other things, secures their right to have it in future years. We've had some folks parking there for free, and that isn't fair either, because we've got permit holders who paid for a permit. By the same token, there's no public purpose served by trying to keep people from parking in a lot that has been largely empty. So overlaid on that is that we've seen increasing activity at the Bedford Road end, in part because of the vibrancy of some of the businesses right nearby. So this is a proposal that would address all of that.
Yeah, so just a couple of comments. First of all, there's been a number of people that have written in that are upset about the changes. They're afraid, justly afraid, they're gonna lose their ability to park. You know, I was one of the people who, for many years, held one of these permits. Because I teach at NYU, I would not be on the train at 8:00 a.m. I'd be going a little bit later in the day. And I want to emphasize that this is temporary, that we will be monitoring conditions, that this is really a response to the situation as it exists today, and also a shift in the usage of parking in the village. We have a bigger need now for people to actually be able to come here and park here in the day to use our businesses. And we're at a, you know, we find ourselves at times with a dearth of parking for that purpose. So if we get to the situation where people who buy legitimate parking passes for Memorial Plaza are having trouble parking at any point, then I think we would absolutely reevaluate this. But for now, it's a tremendously underused asset that could be valuable to both people coming to the village to spend money, as well as the businesses that are supporting them.
Yeah, and I will just add to that, that we had parking, we hired a consultant a couple of years back to do an evaluation of our downtown parking, and one of the conclusions was that what we were really lacking in the downtown area was short-term parking. So this is an attempt to, given this particular situation that has emerged, to address that.
Well, and as David mentioned, oh, go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, I just, I have a couple, I guess, questions that I think Eric can answer that hadn't come up yet in this, in our meetings, which is to David's point about this being temporary and that we could switch back if there's an issue. I just wanted to ask how easy, logistically, that is. You know, is it, how easy is it to change the signs? Yeah, if all of a sudden, we don't have spaces for permit holders, you know?
Right, so it's the local law process that we're going through right now to amend the code. We would go through this legislatively. From an operational perspective, we would work with Pango to update the software, the mobile app, which would be aligned with whatever the board chooses to do. And then from a signage perspective, it's replacing signs. We do that all over the village on an annual basis, so it would not be a heavy lift.
So if we needed to pivot, you know, within six weeks or so, it could all be changed? If we need to change part of the lot, just hypothetically?
Yeah, I would say probably it's a month and a half to a two-month process.
Okay, that's helpful, in case that happens. I don't anticipate it, but we just want to, we want to know.
Yeah.
And my second question is to the constituents who are permit holders who are concerned that they've signed on to a deal and now it's changing, you know, during their, the year that they've paid. I am sympathetic to that, and so I'm wondering if there are wait lists on other lots currently? Because I know that that shifted a lot over, during the pandemic. So if someone said, you know what, I just want to change my lot?
So that is possible, depending on the availability in the other lots. It depends on what is currently available, but generally speaking, yes.
So I'll just repeat that for the microphone. So yes, generally, we would be able to accommodate. And if the board was inclined to offer a prorated refund to those permit holders, that's something we could look into as well.
So a couple of other points, just our useful background, and one is even pre-pandemic, we had a lot of empty spaces there.
Yes, we did.
We were running about 20 unused spaces pre-pandemic. The other thing, looking at the pre-pandemic parking study, was just about every commuter had been parked in a space by 10:00 a.m. I think the count was 100 spaces used by 10:00 a.m., and then maybe by 12:01, that went up to 101.
And there's been several studies also done of return-to-work cycles for New York City-based businesses, and most of them are not going back five days a week. Most of them are going back three days a week, and those days vary too. So the odds of, you know, absent an increase in the number of people who live here or the percentage of people who work in the city, the odds of us ever getting back to the kind of parking that we had a year and a half ago are probably not incredibly high right at the moment.
Well, and as Michael already alluded, you know, we're gonna respond if we have a problem. But as of the moment, it's our belief that permit holders are not at great risk of having any problem at all.
No.
And, you know, another concern raised was that whereas the parking is officially free after 3:00 p.m. and all day Saturday, we're proposing to have a fee after 3:00 p.m. and on Saturday for those who are not already permit holders. And that fee is 75 cents an hour, which is the same as what we charge on the street parking. Just to be clear, permit holders are paying substantially less than that. Our permit deals are among the cheapest around, certainly not the cheapest, but pretty affordable, so.
Yeah, and to be clear, the permit holders can still park there as they wish. They're not charged at any point. Part of the concern we've had is the farmer's market on Saturday often has trouble with the part of the lot that they're not using for the food trucks, because there are people who, some of whom may not even live in the village, coming and parking in the lot to go to the city for the weekend. And that, you know, really makes, that's one of the most difficult traffic times that we have for that space, and that definitely makes it worse there, so this will help improve that situation.
So, and our intention is to buy muni meters, similar to the ones we have in the Manville Lot and the Bedford Road Lot, but the intention is to have you type in your license plate number so that you don't have to go back to your car with a receipt to put on the dash. And recognize also, you know, there have been moments when this is sort of presented as an effort to boost parking revenue. That isn't what generated this at all. Obviously, we've had a significant loss in parking revenue, there's no doubt about that, but we're not trying to raise revenue. We're trying to manage parking, and we're trying to manage people's behavior. And, you know, what we're finding, which isn't headline news, is that free parking is used in all kinds of ways, and some of them, as David just mentioned, are in conflict with some of our community goals. And secondly, you know, the business of putting in these meters and all of that is not an insignificant expense. You can also pay by Pango, which is the pay-by-app system that exists now throughout the village. If you're willing to pay a service charge, that's not a requirement, but it's an option for you, so.
Assuming you can get a cell signal.
Right. All right.
Comments from the public?
Is there any comment from the public or anybody on Zoom? As mentioned, we haven't read officially, but have received record notes from several different people. They've come to Alyssa, and anyone who has further comments is welcome to send them as well. But the real issues were permit holders who were afraid that if they weren't there by 10:00, they wouldn't get a space, and that is not our expectation nor what we intended. And if that turns into a problem, we're gonna address it. And then the other question was a concern about charging after 3:00 and on Saturdays. And I think I addressed the well springs of the decision to go that way, so. There you have it. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Just one final piece of data, which is that I am a three-day-a-week commuter, and I've been counting spaces. So just to make sure, and this morning, there were 47 empty spaces on a Monday morning, you know, on a Monday morning at 9:30. So I feel like we're in pretty good shape.
And to be perfectly honest, I'm guessing after we institute the requirement to pay and enforce that, there will be even more empty spaces, because there are some folks there who are parking there because it has been lightly enforced for the reasons already described. So it's our goal to make parking as available as possible, and we've recognized the interleading goals. Commuters are a very important constituency for our parking, and we certainly haven't forgotten that.
Yes, was it two or two and a half years ago, three of us read some part of a thousand-page book on parking? And we learned that actually free parking is the most expensive parking of all.
Right. Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. We have ended the public hearing. Bounce to the resolutions. Michael, number 282. We're going in our new order here, because we're sitting this way because of the joint meeting with the school board.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on October 25th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections to the minutes? Just to remind everybody, available on our website at pleasantville-ny.gov is the quarterly presentation that we referred to in the joint meeting with the school board, done by Chief Eric Rutzner. Really very interesting stuff, and anybody who has an interest in how your village works or how your police department works, I encourage you to take a look, pleasantville-ny.gov. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 283, Mr. Panther.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for the fiscal year of 2022 as listed below. $3,500 from account F1990.400 contingent going to the account F831.443 Engineering. Also, there's an increase in revenues and expenses of the capital fund, amount $50,000 from the inter-fund transfer to capital. That's the revenue, and the expense is the street resurfacing for the fiscal year of 2022. Also, $75,000, the inter-fund transfer to capital. That's a new water department vehicle. Altogether, $125,000.
Is there a second?
Second. Let's see balance of the capital account right now.
So we have many capital accounts. We have a variety of capital accounts, so.
The vehicular for the...
So right here, what we ended up doing, we approved a new water truck. The water truck was in an accident last year, so during budget time, went over capital. We authorized purchasing a new water truck. We go through a mini-bid system on that through the Office of General Services of the state. We get that number back, and then we move the money from the budget to a capital line to acquire the vehicle. The vehicle, we have to pay upon its arrival, which will be 10 months from now. But we just went through the mini-bid system, so we took what we budgeted, and we're moving it to a capital line. And the $50,000, similar story there. That was approved in the budget for curb and sidewalk. We moved 150 last meeting, and actually, we authorized 200,000. So we're moving that additional 50 into the capital.
And since the audit and the closing at the year-end for the reserve fund...
So you're asking about the fund balance?
Yes.
The fund balance is quite healthy. We're probably hovering in about the 35% as a proportion of the general fund appropriations, which is a very, very healthy fund.
Okay.
Which is happy news, given what we confront, first off, as we're about to do, authorize the bidding for the Manville Road project, but also spend what is expected to be three-plus million dollars on the pool.
Yeah, and a million and a half in this building, right?
Yeah, over, yeah, the next several years. Now, just a point of reference too, we're gonna, we've concluded our annual audit, and so Connor Davies is gonna be presenting to the board. They're just finishing up, so we're eyeing that probably for December, early January.
Okay.
So we'll go over the general fund and fund balance and all that.
Seems just like yesterday.
Yeah.
They keep, they keep coming. Those years keep coming. All in favor of resolution 283?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. 284, David.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated November 8th, 2021, for fiscal year ending 2022, covering check numbers 101878 to 102034, from the general fund, $193,423.99, from the water fund, $149,746.31, from the capital fund, $34,931.84, from the refuse fund, $22,565.60, for a total of $400,667.74 claims attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the payment of claims? Reminding anyone who's still with us, you can download this yourself. If you click into the agendas at pleasantville-ny.gov, it will take you to Novus Agenda, where all this stuff lives, and you can see every single line of each one of these items. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 285, Nicole.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to advertise for bids for the Manville Road Corridor Improvement Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
A very short sentence for a very big subject.
Yeah, we are on track to go out to bid starting November 22nd. That bid process would incorporate a site visit or pre-bid meeting with potential bidders, looking to wrap up or open awards towards the end of December. So at that point, we will know the ballpark cost of this project.
Comments, questions?
No, we're just, you know, hoping that because of the bill that was just passed, that additional funds, because this was originally supposed to be fully funded by federal money coming from the state.
Well, we were supposed to, based on the original budget, it was a million and a half from the state, 750 from us.
Right.
It would be great if this new federal funding can come our way. It would appear that it's likely to be through the state, and that's a whole political mill, but we will be in line with our hands up. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. I might add, Manville Road is a state road, and so it's in their own interest.
Yes, it is.
286, back to you, Michael.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the village administrator to execute a grant-disbursement agreement with DASNY in the amount of $200,000 for the Memorial Plaza Civic Space Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
DASNE is the regulatory authority of the state of New York. This is, this is money coming to us through the efforts of Assemblymember Abenanti.
Yep, we have two, these are called SAM grants, State Municipal Facilities Grants. We've secured two in support of Memorial Plaza, one from Assemblymember Abenanti and one from Senator Harkum. These were allocated over a year ago, just going through DASNE's process. Now, this grant-disbursement agreement comes before the board, and in order to execute it, I need your authorization. So I believe there's three years to spend the SAM grants, and you can always ask for an extension as well.
Well, let me just say, having sat at this table for a long time, we had a long drought. So I appreciate the efforts.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, more in favor. 287, Paul.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation of Deana Monahan, school crossing guard, effective October 30th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sorry to lose Deana Monahan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. In a moment, we'll replace Deana. David, 288.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Recreation Department to hold the annual Veterans Day ceremony at 11:00 a.m. on November 11th, 2021, in Memorial Plaza, and further authorizes the police chief to post no parking signs in the Memorial Plaza parking lot in advance of the event and to tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
So as mentioned at the outset, Veterans Day is this Thursday, the 11th, ceremony at 11:00 a.m., which is a village event with the assistance of the Fancher Nickel American Legion Post. And the school district is generous, as they always have been, in rounding up some students who will participate and sing on a day they might otherwise have off. And so all very much appreciated. Please join us. All in favor?
So hold on, I'm a little confused. Is this the whole lot or just the north end?
No, so we're still working out details. We may just restrict parking around the gazebo.
The center of the lot.
Yeah, and just to be clear, the ceremony itself takes about 45 minutes.
Not, if that, so.
No, but I mean, for people who are parking and getting on the train, that for the whole...
Right, no, not the whole lot. It'll be, it'll be more targeted, and we'll get the word out once that gets ironed out.
So we're at the gazebo, not at the war monuments at the end.
Okay, it just, the wording of it implied to me that maybe it was the whole lot, so I just want to...
No, not the whole lot.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 289, Nicole.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring of Andrew McFadden as a part-time school crossing guard job code 0141 at the hourly rate of $20.62 with an effective date of November 9th, 2021. Said appointment is subject to a probationary period of not less than 12 weeks to a maximum of 52 weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Back to you, Michael, the last one on the list, 290.
Would you like me to read the attached law as well or just the resolution? Just the resolution?
Yeah, that's typically what we do.
Yeah, and you can refer to the details attached in the record.
All right, whereas introductory local law seven of 2021 has been introduced to amend Chapter 173, Section 71, and Section 75 of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville concerning parking in the Memorial Plaza parking lot. And whereas a public hearing concerning introductory local law seven of 2021 was held and closed on November 8th, 2021, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby adopts introductory local law seven of 2021 to amend Chapter 173, Section 71, and Section 75 of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville, which is to become local law eight of 2021 upon its passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is the other shoe dropping from the public hearing we began with.
That's right. Yep, and so we introduce the local law as an introductory law, which has its own numbering system. In case an introductory law doesn't pass, then it becomes a local law when adopted.
So just to recap, a few people with commuting permits had expressed concern that they would find it difficult to park after 10:00 a.m. It is not our belief that that is likely to be the case, and we will keep our fingers on the pulse of how this operates. But we do feel as though the proposed changes create not only more availability for parking for all, but also more fairness, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. That is the last of our agendas, agenda items. Is there anything else anyone wanted to say? New business, comment from the public on any subject?
Should I mention the leaf blower thing?
Go for it.
Okay. Sorry, guys. So I just wanted to say that, you know, we're planning to schedule a public hearing on the leaf blower legislation that we last discussed, I think, towards the end of the summer. And there's one piece that we're thinking about possibly adding to it, and I just wanted to make you aware of it. And that is to possibly ban the kind of leaf blowers that are...
Slow travel?
No, no, I'm sorry. I have it written down, so I'm tired at this point. Basically, like a ride-on type of leaf blower. So there's one that is occasionally parked in front of my house that belongs to a local landscaping company that is called a Hurricane, which gives you an idea of the size of leaf blower that we're talking about. So not the kind of regular backpack leaf blower that people walk around with, but there's like a new generation of gas-powered leaf blowers that are truly massive. So I essentially wanted to make you aware of that and see if you had any feedback or thoughts.
There are sorts of things that are used on like a college campus quad, you know, or really, really large spaces, you know? But not, not so much for residential use.
I mean, they are being used residentially.
No, I'm agreeing. It doesn't make sense.
Oh, oh, yeah.
It seems like it's an overkill.
An overkill, yeah.
Does this mean that we'll have a lobbyist visiting us soon or...
Look, I mean, it's a contentious matter. And as we well know, having done this survey and heard from people all along, there are very, very strong feelings on, on, on many different aspects of it, and in many different directions. But I do think it's clear that the disruption of people's lives has reached a point where some sort of action is necessary.
I also wanted to make you aware of something else, which is that I mentioned earlier, the climate smart community. So we have received a grant of $5,000 for the sort of level of points that we've, that we've achieved at this point. And we're, the consensus seems to be that we're going to spend the money to kind of support the overall effort by the village to move away from gas-powered lawn equipment towards electric lawn equipment. And there are two ways that we're thinking of doing that in particular. One is to purchase some electric-powered leaf blowers for the village. And, you know, we recently purchased an electric-powered lawnmower, a ride-on lawnmower, which by all accounts is functioning every bit as well as the gas-powered ones, because the technology is getting a lot better. So to provide the village with, I don't know how many, but some electric-powered leaf blowers. And we're also looking into something that Lewis Borough is doing right now, which is to have a rebate program for individuals who have gas-powered leaf blowers, or it could theoretically apply to lawnmowers as well, and want to trade it in for something electric.
That's great.
So that's something that's, that's happening right now in other municipalities around the county. So we're in communication with them. So we, because we want to also lead by example as we move forward with this, and, and not just through the legislation. So.
So at any rate, as Nicole mentioned, the actual text of the regulations will get published, and there will be a formal public hearing. And people can have, have at it, and certainly will, and let us know what they think.
Yeah.
That's where we're headed.
We've had a series of hearings and meetings about this so far. But since we have so much going on right now, this is going to be happening in January. But I just wanted to let you guys know.
So will there be another work session before that, or we'll go straight to?
I think most likely it will go straight to a public hearing. So with the, the law defined as it was in the last public meeting, which would be a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers during the summer months only. So it wouldn't affect spring cleanup and fall cleanup. And it would allow homeowners to continue using electric blowers during the summer as well. And the same applies to landscapers. So, and we've been meeting with, you know, sort of interested parties throughout the village, with the school district, with the country club, and so on, as we kind of move closer to that date.
Okay.
Great. Thank you for that, Nicole. And thank you for pushing that forward, and having worked with these various constituencies. Anything else?
I wanted to remind everyone that the Chamber of Commerce and the Village Rec Department are going to go forward with the community sing-along and holiday lighting, scheduled for Wednesday, December 1, 2021, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. We're in the process of figuring out exactly what we're going to do, and who's going to perform. We're trying to get, I believe, the middle school chorus to do, like we've always had. And then possibly get some other performers to come and do some singing. Usually, we've cooperated with Pace College, and they've given us hot chocolate. And also, the rec department gives out little bags. And the village, the Chamber of Commerce is looking to see if we can get out some cookies. So we're trying to plan all that out for that date. So just letting everyone know, because we've been asked if we're going to do it this year, because we did last year, and we are going to go forward for that.
So December 1, do you think?
December 1, Wednesday, December 1.
Thank you for that, Paul. And, and thanks to you and all your colleagues at the Chamber of Commerce. Anything else? Have we missed anything, Mr. Morrissey?
I think we covered it all.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening. Thank you for your attention. We'll be back in two weeks. Two weeks is the public hearing on the opt-out for marijuana dispensaries and lounges. So if you have an opinion on that, we encourage you to weigh in. But it's the board's intent to opt out, and that is what the public hearing is about. Thanks to our colleagues from the school district who joined us tonight. Good evening.